...
Got all the kids.
All right, I'm going to call to order the Thursday, October 3rd, committee of the whole meeting at six o'clock. We can have a couple people on the phone so we can start this. But you can have a little call.
Mr. Vivin.
Here.
Mr. Crady.
Here.
Mrs. Murray. Mr. Quagliano. Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mrs. Wiley.
Here.
All right, with that, there are five plus. We will start the meeting. Number two, the pledge allegiance, I think we have some high five winners.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the mercy and justice for all.
Good evening, board. So excited to have some special kids here with us tonight. These are our October Humley High Five winners. So they're going to come up one at a time and introduce themselves to you. Brian, are you ready?
Hi, my name is Ryan Michael Santos. I am in fifth grade and I go to Chesapeake.
Okay, Brian, you get to be our first person. After you introduce yourself, I am going to read part of what your teacher said about you for the nomination, and you'll get that with your certificate, the whole thing that they wrote. So sometimes it's hard to hear really good things about you, like you guys should always look around. Brian is consistently a good classmate, showing empathy and staying involved. He goes out of his way to help others in need, always doing so with kindness and sincerity. Has a prime example of a positive role model in our classroom. Brian asks questions to get to know his classmates and ensures that everyone feels included. I'm so proud to nominate Brian for the Humley High Five Students Award. And that was your teacher, Mrs. Murray. Congratulations.
My name is Remi Lynn Lena. I go to, I go to McCaden Elementary, and my grade is second grade.
And Remi, your teacher Misses Clark, can you say about you? Remi demonstrates all the qualities of a successful second grader. She comes to school each day ready to learn. She pays attention and listens not only with her ears but with her heart. She tries her best, works cooperatively with others, is always ready to go and follows our McCaden champs' expectations. She spreads positively, positivity, and most importantly, she is a kind friend to all of her classmates. Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Jolene Grace Blackwell. My school is Martin, and I'm in fifth grade.
And Jillian, your teacher, can you say about you? Jillian is a remarkable student at Martin Elementary School who consistently goes above and beyond in her daily interactions and responsibilities. She demonstrates an exceptional level of respect towards both her peers and teachers, always addressing them with kindness and consideration. She is incredibly helpful, always ready to lend a hand to a classmate. Her attitude and actions set a positive example for those around her, making the school a happier place and better place for everyone. Congratulations.
My name is Michael Ginter. I'm in the eighth grade and I go to (inaudible).
I'm not quite really a nominal teacher, so I'll let you know it was Mrs. McChrystal. I'd like to introduce Michael, an exceptional young man who exemplifies both intellectual insight and athletic talent. Admired for his kindness and positive demeanor, he consistently uplifts those around him and serves as a role model to his peers. His dedication to excellence whether in academics, sports, or collaborative endeavors is truly commendable. It's a privilege to have such an outstanding and well-rounded student at Highland. Congratulations.
My name is Cameron Brink, and I, I'm seventh grade and I go to Marlowe Middle School.
And Cameron, yours comes from your literacy teacher and from Mrs. Halper. Cameron demonstrates what it means to be a responsible Marlowe Mustang. After finding fourteen dollars on the ground outside, Cameron turned the money into the front office and reported it right away. He credited his honesty to a recent lesson they were learning in literacy class on Marlowe. He knew that while it would be great to keep that extra money, it was important to have the moral honesty and not keeping the money that wasn't his. We're proud of Cameron and his ability to show what's right as a Marlowe Mustang. Congratulations.
My name is Christian Golansky, and I'm a sophomore in Humley High School.
Christian will multiple teachers too, so this is coming from your biology teacher. Christian is responsible and shows up to class on time every day, to go with his phone put away, his Chromebook out, and his preview page on the screen. Is respectful to his peers as well as his teachers, works well with others, and is very patient when explaining a concept to his lab partner. Christian is very involved in class, is focused and engaged. Also, you also earned the highest score on your review game in class, which earned you something for. Again, congratulations. Now, just a second, we're going to have you guys come on up. We have a certificate and then the whole nomination from that teacher, so that you can have it. And parents, after we do that, we'll get a picture. You can come on up and take pictures with them. And thank you for sharing your children with us. They are incredible individuals here in our district.
And parents, if you'd like to come up, you can certainly come up and take pictures. Don't be shy.
Oh, great. Smile. One, two, three. Karen, are you ready to do it?
Yeah.
Are you impressed by what you did?
Good job, guys.
Right. Enjoy that. Number three, public comment. Public comment. We'll move to addition and adoption of the agenda. I don't see any changes, please. Does anybody have any changes? All right, with that, I will make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Thompson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, with that, motion passed. And we will move to number five, Special Education Committee, Mrs. Wiley.
Okay. I'm going to ask for Jill to give a report on special services today.
Just to have a quick update. Last year, we asked for the board to support an increase in our professional development in CPI. So our board approved the plan to increase the number of trainers we had in our district to provide training for our staff on nonviolent crisis prevention. And I wanted to just give you an update on that recommendation that you all approved last year. Our commitment to do that increased the number of staff that we certified to train as trainers from two to twelve staff members. That allowed us to expand our training options. Previously, we had only been providing full-day training, and this allowed us to offer both a full-day training and a partial-day training. Both with different focus, and it really allowed us to target the professional development to the staff groups that really needed, got to differentiate that. So by increasing the number of staff, and non-certified staff will be trained this school year, I wanted to let you know numerically, just by October 15th, we'll train nine hundred and sixty-nine staff members. That's an increase from four hundred and thirty-seven staff members that we were able to train for the duration of last school year. To accomplish those goals, we offered training in a variety of ways and continue to offer training in a variety of ways. We're training all certified and non-certified staff through summer schedule, summer drop-in, teacher institute days, early release days, and also some building scheduled training opportunities as well. We've also planned for training parents and students in the district who are at high risk for physical intervention, so offering some of that training to our parents who are most at need, so extending that further. Really obviously want to thank the board for supporting that last year, which allowed us to already begin some of that important work this year. And then also the CPI trainers, it's a heavy lift to train, especially while we're up and running during the school year. And they've just done an amazing job of being flexible and creative about making sure we have really given everyone as possible access to this training. Really wanted to highlight to our behavior specialists, Allison Anderson and Nicole Severn, or Nikki, their leadership in this and the work they've done to be diligent and try to create a systemic way to allow us to offer this professional development has really been unbelievable, and we would not be able to have done it without them. So wanted to thank you and our trainers and them for all the hard work, and I look forward to seeing where we can grow this even further. So, thanks.
Just a couple questions. So, the trainer increasing these, the CPI services that we're getting or providing are for all students?
Yes. Yes, it's not, it's really preventative. It's talking about how do we understand our approach to supporting students or others. So it's really a preventative way for us to interact with folks who might be having a hard time.
This is a compliment, so this is a compliment to everything else that we have in place, but this is also an additional duty that we're asking our staff to do. So I mean, this is a big undertaking for them as well.
Yes. It's been a really heavy lift in planning, but honestly, I think it's been something we're really committed to supporting. Staff have asked for more specialized support in how we understand behavior, how we support behavior. And I think these strategies that we're, we're really learning and growing as a district are going to be instrumental to everyone in our district, so.
I see it as a real benefit. I know, just talking with, like Dr. Beal, earlier this week, that having this type of awareness for the staff has been really important. Provides them a little bit more accountability as staff to understand like what they need to do, that things don't have to automatically get escalated every time. And so they have those tools available for themselves to be able to use now, I think. And it develops the relationship with the students, too. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I think that's it. So, Mr. Quagliano?
Okay, Finance Committee, six point one is our available purchase orders and press checks, et cetera. Any questions, concerns related to those items? If not, we'll move this forward to the board meeting. Except two monthly fiscal updates, Mr. Altmeier.
Thanks very much. Just a few items to note. The FY24 audit is done. We are in the, we are in the final stages of wrapping up the MDNA and taking and tying all the numbers in that, in that large document. So we'll be presenting that back to the auditors for final completion, and the auditor will be here to present the audit report in November. And then I do want to report on, there is an operational efficiency strategic planning goal there. And although that goal is not a KPI for this year, right, it didn't make the KPI, this is definitely a goal that we are keeping. It's, you know, operational efficiency, if it goes away, we still have that goal internally as a cabinet team, as a, as a financial goal of specifically of the fiscal department. So we're continuing to do that, and throughout the year, we'll provide, you know, operational efficiency updates as we go. But we are still planning a mid-year update to be providing to the board in December. I did want to let the board know that the comm had an inverted rebate related to the transportation solar that we have out front. Was applied for several months ago, and we did hear back that we were awarded forty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars, approximately fifty thousand dollars. So we should be receiving that in the next month or so. So did want to share that, good news with the board as well. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Did the comm have any catch-up on their billing?
Yes, they did, in the last few months. There's some minor irregularities, but we have a bill for maturity to catch up.
Okay, any other questions from Mr. Altmeier on his update? Okay, no questions on the activity report. Very good. Six point three, revenue and expenditures report, Mr. Altmeier.
Thank you very much. For the two months ended August 2024, financial executive summary in hand. Not a lot to report two months into the year. If you do notice, we do have a year-to-date operating deficit of approximately three point eight million dollars. Don't be alarmed, that's, that's very typical this time of year, as these capital projects are being completed from prior summer. Purchased services are, a lot of our purchased services are front-bought in the year. And typically, the first few months of the year, we don't really collect any state or federal revenues. So as a result of that, that's why you're seeing a deficit of three point eight million dollars. Other than that, really nothing, nothing material to report, other than, well, health insurance. We typically talk about health insurance. July, July usually every year is a very high month for health insurance. And this past July, we hit one point three million dollars, one point three, four, five million dollars. And to no surprise, and I think we talked about it last month, that has been the highest month we've ever had. So, when looking at July and August combined, the report that we have notes that while we are trending over budget, because if you straight-line those numbers, add July and August together and divide them by two, that's the average, multiply the average times twelve, we would be trending over budget. But knowing that July is the highest, typically one of the highest months of the year that we see, I'm still hopeful and fairly certain that we will get to a point where hopefully we will be trending with budget. So I did want to share that with the board. It did come down in August a little bit to one point one million, and hopefully we'll see the same thing September. So we'll continue to update the board as we go on that. But other than that, really, no other updates on the financial executive summary.
The questions related to the report?
I guess I'll just say a comment, because we traded emails back and forth on it on the healthcare. I'm just hoping that we do catch up on this, because we did make a big change to this, I think in my mind, just get ahead of this. So that's why I was a little surprised to see that we were already under budget.
Over budget.
Over, yeah, yeah. Over, again, it is, it is, you know, it makes sense. Their staff is off during that time. They get the time to go see doctors, do all their maintenance. So that is typically why it runs a little hot, or higher right now on that end. So I think we'll be all right. No, no, two months, that's true. So, if no other questions concerning the revenue expenditure report, we'll move on to six point four, revenue catchings. There's three of them. Is there any questions or concerns related to those three catchings? So we should move that forward to the board meeting for approval. And we're on to HR.
Mr. Crady, do you want to take this, or do you want me to go ahead with it?
I can take it. I will send it over to Dr. Zero for an update.
Yes, we have the health insurance committee recommendation before the board here. Before the next board meeting, want to thank Mrs. Wiley and Mr. Troy for being a part of that committee where we meet with HA representatives, health representatives, and our broker aligned to bring in our health insurance rates for the year. So, there's one thing at your place up there. Those are our medical plans. This way you can get an idea of what those look like with co-pays, deductible, things of that nature. There are no changes to the actual plan. We continue to provide very robust medical plans and, and, you know, good health insurance that we're providing to the district. And our broker does bring some requests sometimes or some recommendations to, you know, change some of those plans, and the committee has not wanted to do that thus far. So what you're seeing in the memo in front of you is the recommendation for the rate changes. So I have an overview here of what things would look like moving forward. Mr. Altmeier has budgets accordingly for this. So for our medical plan, we'll remain with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Our broker did go out to bid. Usually we don't. Blue Cross Blue Shield, we've been with for a number of years, but they took a look at some other folks that could provide medical for us, and the increases were way higher than what we're seeing from Blue Cross Blue Shield. Off the top of my head, I think one of them was in the twenty percent range, and maybe both of them were. So that was not an option to make a change for the medical plan. So unfortunately, we are going to see another significant increase of approximately six point four percent for 2025 for our medical plan. As we look at some of our other plans here, we are going to make one major shift, or recommending one major shift, and that is to move our life and long-term disability over to MetLife. We are currently with MetLife for dental. We had a deal last year with MetLife on the dental today with a cap on our increase, that we couldn't go over seven percent. And we hit that cap, so we are going to see a seven percent increase in the dental. We went out to bid for other life insurance policies. Lincoln Financials, who we're currently with, returned a quote of a fifteen point one percent increase. MetLife came back, and it was a one point seven percent increase. And they also offered an additional cap on our dental for 2026 if we bundled. So we are going to make a recommendation to move our long-term disability and life insurance over to MetLife, so we'll have that in the dental under one umbrella. We'll continue to offer our vision, this is the last year for our vision deal, year three, so they did not go out to bid for that. And a couple other things we have here that are voluntarily is our Aflac voluntary and our Aflac, sorry, voluntary accident insurance and critical illness insurance. So the attachments that are there, this is what the employees see. They, they essentially see, this is per pay, is what we're looking at. So based on the plan that they choose, our employees are paid on the tenth and twenty-fifth of the month, so this is what would go into effect on January first. So most of our employees across the district, probably ninety percent of them are on twenty-four pay. So what you're seeing are the rates on that first sheet from 2024, and then the second sheet are the rates for 2025. So you can get an idea of the increase that the employees would see per pay. And we still have our contract language, and you can see the percentages there of what the board pays out to the side on the twenty-four pay. And then some other categories of employees that we have are seventeen pay employees, who do not get paid year-round. And then we also have some language in the contract, what we call dual employees. So if you are married to another employee, you will see those sheets in here also. And those sheets and rates are pretty good deals. So that's what we're recognizing there. So I like to see, I like to provide to the board, you know, the real numbers that come across at the end of the day to the employees and what that looks like on January 10th, when the deductions start coming out. Something I'm not addressing in here that's in the contract, we're in the middle of our wellness screenings right now. So employees who turn in a wellness screening and a physical for the year, do get twenty-five dollars off per month if they complete all that just by November 30th, of course. So we've been very successful with that, and that kicked off this week. Any questions that we may have, or Mrs. Wiley, any comments you may have, that you were able to have the front-row seat to some of those meetings?
What was enlightening, and I, for the wellness screening, what is our rate of return for how many employees complete that and are eligible for that credit?
Yeah, so, so how that works, okay, we have to be as far employees only who are currently on the health plan, so their dependents can't come in on that. And last year, our number was six hundred and thirty-six participants. We did the wellness screening, and right now, we're trending under that number, but they can still sign up through November 30th, so there's some time to catch up. But my last look at that, we were about a hundred under that number from previous years.
Dr. Serbs, it's a benefit for that reduction for anybody who is on that plan. And then our administrators, we are all, we all are required to.
Yeah.
And then just a clarification, you said for the medical plan through Blue Cross Blue Shield, you said expect a total increase of six point one percent?
Sixteen point four.
I thought I heard six, and I saw sixteen in the ratings. I just wanted to check.
Sixteen point, sixteen point four, we've been smiling a little bit.
I think, obviously.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's it. Thank you.
And the committee had some other discussions about ways to investigate opportunities to bring costs down as we move forward. And so Mr. Altmeier and myself will be looking at that, and also our union leadership will be contacting some local districts to see things that they may be involved in.
From a budget perspective, the sixteen percent increase is absorbed into the budget?
Correct. So part of the, right, what we need to understand is what we're talking about is calendar year twenty-five right now. So the first half of twenty-five is part of the twenty-five budget. The second half of twenty-five will be part of the FY26 budget.
So is it?
So based on timing, based on the numbers that we previously received before, we shared that with the board before they went back to sharpen their pencils, so to speak, and had Blue Cross Blue Shield actually lower some of their fixed fees and provide a higher RX rebate, et cetera, et cetera. We had utilized those numbers to help us forecast and determine where we think we would be in fiscal year 24. So yes, do you think it's covered?
Yes, I think, I think it's covered. I'm hoping it's covered based on what we're seeing trending now and what we're seeing trending via the underwriting for FY20, or calendar year 25. Yes.
Again, because we aren't paying a premium to the clients.
Correct.
Okay, so what's happened with that?
before they went back to sharpen their pencils, so to speak, and had Blue Cross Blue Shield actually lower some of their fixed fees and provide a higher RX rebate, et cetera, et cetera. We had utilized those numbers to help us forecast and determine where we think we would be in fiscal year '24. So yes, do you think it's covered? Yes, I think it's covered. I'm hoping it's covered based on what we're seeing trending now and what we're seeing trending via the underwriters for FY '24, calendar year '25. Yes.
Again, because we aren't paying a premium to the clients.
Correct.
Okay. So what's happened with that increase is we, you know, it sets the amount that the employees have to pay. So you probably were slightly under what they would be charged for the first six months of '25 is what I'm going to guess. So there's probably more reimbursement than what you were anticipating, slightly. I mean, that's.
Less likely, but not much. Right. Generally, when we estimate health insurance in the out years in this situation, right, there's like a timing lag because generally we don't get the open enrollment. We don't get this type of data, so August or September, which is right around the time we're trying to determine where do we think we're going to end up next year on health insurance. And historically, we've always been very favorable. But over the last several years, we've had a lot of large claimants in the pipeline. We just recently learned of a really extraordinary high claimant in our pipeline. Now, a high claimant is a high claimant because if they hit the stop loss of $200,000, that's why we have a stop loss premium. But part of the reason why we are seeing a 16.5% increase in the overall estimated cost to the district in total is because of fixed fees for the stop loss premium. And over the last two and a half years, we have been reimbursed, like literally reimbursed by Blue Cross Blue Shield, almost $7.3 million, while the premium for those two and a half years previously was $3.2 million. So almost four, the Blue Cross Blue Shield paid us out $4 million more than the premium they received from us. So part of that reason is why we're seeing such a large increase in the insurance premium. But to answer the question, yes, we do the best we can with the data we have and understanding what the underwriters think is going to happen in the next calendar year to help us forecast the current year budget. That's the end of conference.
It's more of a problem than, have you think about it. When we go through the I A S B resolutions that are coming up, one of them that is being proposed, and I'm not sure where I stand on this, yet, is to push the state to basically all collective bargained agreements use a state's insurance. 10 years ago, I probably would have said no way. I'm not so sure that that's a bad idea right now. So I guess think about that, if that's something we should be pushing for in the district. Don't answer that right now.
Yeah, I'd really have to think about it and look at all the positives and negatives associated with that.
It's not 100% clear.
Yeah.
And I do think, just sitting in on the committee, something that was good to learn is that the increases are due to these larger claims that we've found out about. We want our employees, obviously, to have the best insurance possible, and we want healthy employees. And then what I do appreciate, Dr. Zier, working with our providers is trying to figure out, like, what are some things, and then obviously working with our union leadership, what are some things that we can roll out so that our employees are proactively becoming healthier people? Some of these situations are things that are completely outside of their control. And so given that, you know, a healthy lifestyle might, may or may not have changed that outcome. But I think there are some things, when we start discussing things with union leadership on possible programs that we can put into place that might start to mitigate some of these concerns that we have so that the propensity for these large losses might come down. And that's something that's new. I have not seen the district doing, so I appreciate the thought you've been put into that.
Question? Question?
Go ahead.
Yes. Was there any, has there been any changes to stop loss in general as far as premiums or the dollar amount, the threshold? And I don't know if that, I don't remember if that's part of this particular insurance proposal as well.
Can I answer you? You want me to answer? No, it's part of, it's part of the underwriters and alliance working together analyzing an increase in stop loss at this time. I presume that's what you're asking. But our stop loss used to be, well, back in the day, 100, I believe, $35,000. It went to 165,000, and it's currently a $200,000 stop loss. So there, you know, there are various calculations, break-even calculations based on premium cost and alliance working with the underwriters to look at that. But based on the large claimants that we do have in the pipeline, they didn't see, they didn't see a huge benefit by increasing the stop loss because there's risk with increasing the stop loss, right? Because we do have a lot of claimants, a lot of claimants that are underneath that $200,000. And if we raise that, well, we raise the bar for all of those claimants from hitting that bar. And yes, it might, it might yield a higher reimbursement on the outside. But the reduction in premium, we didn't see the benefit by taking the reduction in premium and moving forward with the risk we would have. But we did look at that, Mr. Troy.
That's exactly where my question was going. Thank you for answering that.
You're welcome.
All right. Anything else for Dr. Zier? Anything else from you, Sean? Mr. Crandall?
Nope. Good to go. Thanks.
We'll move to number eight. I'll hand it to you, Mr. Troy.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Linkless, anything to highlight on the ONM updates this month?
Yes, I do have a few highlighted updates with the ONM departments. The curtain wall restoration at Honey High School is scheduled for occupation till October. The community solar installation on reroll campus is constructed for forecast of fall 2024 still. We are working with storefronts on the final documents needed to be beginning construction on that at the moment. Since the beginning of the school, August 14th through September 14th, the ONM department has received 1,141 work order requests with a completion of 3.22 days to complete all those. That number is up 300 work orders from last year from school here. So that's quite a bit.
Is there a reason?
Um, yeah, there was a lot of construction going on with carpet replacements, so a lot of requests to move things around for that, getting staff back organized. HR Green will begin the design development phase for the asphalt projects coming up next year, headed to start October 11th. And for the final ONM update, I would like to hand off to Mr. Rikosik to close it out for his one last ONM update for the board.
Thanks, Kevin.
We have a time limit of 15 minutes.
I think it should be a lot shorter on this one. You know, the question that came up earlier is the comment cut up on the building. Yes, yes, they have. They admit they still have a few little bumps in the road going with their customer base, which is a lot larger than us. But we are now getting interval data. It's coming out differently. But I was able to develop an Excel workbook that Kevin and the ONM team can now just download the comment data again and download the solar production meter data and recalculate what the coincidental P command would have been and download what the production is for a period matching the comment billing period so we can recalculate the invoice. Because we have a totally unbundled invoice, there's no hidden charges every month. So we know what all the little tariffs are for this, that, and the other things. And so I'm very pleased to see that the outcome for the year is a lot more than the forefront power for the projection of 210,000 dollars a year. We did really well. And I will tell you, from, you know, just picking apart every bill for a long number of years, including the last year, that they come in, it's because of all the little charges other than the cost of how much power is being generated or going up. Continue to go up. There was a little scare that came out recently, a little notice that came through. It scared me a lot more than I realized after I totally forgot getting to our billing recently, that the reverse auction for the CJM customers, which is, comment is part of the regional, part of the national grid managed by FERC, and that their reverse auction for their fees for managing that grid, which what they do with that is they're actually, they're actually making sure there's enough capacity to serve all the customer base to avoid a large outage. That's what they did for. That's going up 900%, so I thought, oh, my gosh, this guy's wrong, because that's a big part of the bill. But it turns out, that's not that big on our bill, the way we were structured. The bigger part of our capacity charges are the local charges for the monthly coincidental P command. Still a real concern that it's not that part. We're not going to be a major bump like some other customers that they manage their capacity like we are by having a net zero metering behind the meter for their solar installation. So our cost of electricity is still a little low. But if you look down here, you'll see some of the, you know, if you look, there's a line like Row 15 for Harmony Campus, goes across the page from right to left. You'll see on that light green highlighted row that the unit cost for a kilowatt hour at the meter is still going up notably. It's all those charges, those fees that we go in, that it's all about. But good news, we're doing very good.
I just have a question, just based on your knowledge, Mr. Rikosik. But the referendum that's being proposed for the Huntley Park District that goes toward their ground, what, if those improvements are made, if that referendum goes forward, those improvements are made, what's the impact then to the facilities that we use, that we partner with the Park District for? Or do you see any negatives to that referendum as far as the community usage of the grounds that we typically lease out or allow our community to use?
I have, I don't have a lot of knowledge about what they're doing. I, Mark has kindly unbundled that other duty he has assigned amongst many other things from 20 years ago that I had before the district really grew where it is. So I'm not that much in touch for being able to answer that kind of thing. I do know that I see that they still have activities that they sponsor within their facilities. And I'm not sure how that's going to change. The structure of how they're billed is something Mark had thought through. If that's changed, I don't know.
I've not taken a real deep dive into there. I know a lot of those are the parts and some of the offerings that they have. But in terms of our agreements with them and utilization of the O K heat building that is down there on 47, and the agreement that we have between some of our rental facilities and the PGR, I don't believe it impacts that at all. So continue with a, you know, great partnership with them on these components, and we'll redo that on an annual basis if things really change with anything that leaves their ground.
No, I'm looking at it more from, and I haven't dived very deeply into it either, but I've learned that, you know, there's something that they want to do on some field. If those are fields that we, they would otherwise be using, that are Huntley field, that are District 158 fields, and now they're using those fields because they've been improved, is there going to be an impact to us from like a rental perspective?
Oh, got on that. I think that's something that we, I don't think so. Right now, it's our baseball fields that are up here on both of the rental school, you know, sites, if you will. But, so I do not think that it would have an impact at all. And they maintain all of that, is that correct?
They, they have activities, they sponsor indoors, some of our indoor facilities. I don't know much about what they're doing, but I do, I was breaking bread with Wes Lepido there quite frequently. And what I understand is more just names, that they're catching up on. But as far as outdoor facilities, the only thing they do is these baseball diamonds on each of the middle schools that were built, were built because when they were built, the school district had a vision of having their own middle school league of that program sponsored. That went away pretty quickly. There's a lot that's changed with the community, I guess. And so that doesn't exist, so.
Can we go ahead? I think there is one update under ONM that's not written down because it's not a write-up one. So I'm going to ask Dr. Zier to come on up now to the podium. And as we know, Doug and I had a lot of conversations earlier this week, and I don't know if you were able to quantify it, but you thought it was somewhere between 800 and 1,000 board meetings? Did you, were you able to pinpoint how many that was?
More than 80, I know that.
More than 80. Over the time, I know structures over the years of the number and how board meetings have changed over. So, and so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Zier here. But I just, I do wanted to say one quick thing to double over your time here. When we think about the district and the buildings that we have, you quite literally did build the district as we see it today. You were part of all of those things. And I will turn it over to him, and I'm sure Mark will have some comments too on there. But we, I personally will forever be grateful for all of the things over the years. We've known each other for a long time through lots of difficulties, and you will be missed. Your family gets you back. I know you work all day, every day. You deserve the time that you're gonna have here. But this district has certainly shifted. You stayed up with the growth, and then you were able to shift that. When I go into libraries and I see how the mindset has shifted working with our principals to take, how do we keep up with a learning environment as best for our students and have an impact on their achievement and the working environment for our educators? You were instrumental in that, and thank you for everything.
Well, I think I first met Doug at 5:45 a.m. on Marlowe walkthrough. We got that changed to like 6:30 for my sake, a little early riser, that's for sure. But we go back to my time being principal at Marlowe, so much appreciated as we were running that building and fixing things as they go. As I moved over here, we've been through a lot more in terms of, you know, staffing and things of that nature and sharing some space out there with transportation and ONM. And Doug and I had a pretty long conversation about a week ago, and I asked him if he was going to be on call for us. Well, that's a hard no, Kevin. I thought he would say, reach out anytime. No, that was not it. He listed all the places he's going to be traveling, and we will not bother you in those places. So I know Doug is looking forward to, you know, traveling overseas, going out west. I think the Redwoods were mentioned, so I actually don't remember them all, Doug, but he has some very interesting, plus those places to go to. So I know he's looking forward to that, and we'll hold it down here. We'll figure it out, Kevin. Mark, I'll turn it over to you. If you've got anything to say, in the whole person.
Oh, yeah? Oh, yeah, I have a little bit, little bit to say. I've been sitting next to Doug and being entertained by you for the last 16 years. Right? We've had 16 years of the ONM annual update. We've had 16 years of the deferred maintenance plan. But really, truly, what I've learned over the 16 years is there's nothing you don't really know. You're an expert in almost everything. From electric to plumbing, to pavement, to asphalt preparation, to salt application, crack fill, curtain walls, depth of mulch on our playgrounds, actually, that's 14 inches. And all of these things I'm mentioning, by the way, are things that while we as a board, and I know Paul Troy would echo this, are things that we learned. And a lot of things that Kevin is learning from you along the way as well. We've got chillers, we've got boilers, we've got the wet and dry sprinkler systems. And I know the difference between both, and I know which ones are the better ones because we have problems with a lot of these. The air handling, and most recently, you're an expert on the EV infrastructure that we have, and you're an expert on solar voltage. And when I say he is an expert on these things, that's the other thing I really want to recognize Doug here is, because I get to see Doug as part of the Illinois Asbo Association. I see him all the time. And Doug has led several different professional development committees. He has done, I can't, you probably can't even quantify how many presentations you've given for Illinois Asbo. And he started and headed up, correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, the North Central Facilities Group is part of Illinois Asbo, and that's a group of facility managers locally in the North Central region. And every single one of those folks and folks across the state, if they have an issue, they call Doug. That's part of the reason Doug stays up at midnight. Right? Part of the reason I think he's retired. But he is recognized in that association amongst his peers as being the best. But when I hear and when I, when I talk to Ian Lamb, and I talk to Wold and Roger, and I talk to Steve Strub from Hargrove, those are all our partners, those are our vendors, by the way. And I talked to the folks at Consolidated Flooring, and most recently, Brent from Schroder Asphalt. Not only does Doug make us all better, and then he makes his facility managers within the association better, he makes our vendors better. Because more often than not, he's telling our vendors how to do their job and how to hold them accountable. And they have, almost every single one of our vendors has come to me and said, he is awesome. And I know, you know, he's sometimes hard to work with because he holds us so accountable, and I love it. But they love it too because they recognize that at the end of the day, you have made them better. And that is awesome. And that is awesome. And lastly, I think the biggest thing I'm gonna miss about Doug is I've gotten to really know Doug, right? I think I've gotten to know Doug better than, than most people here. And what I'm gonna miss about you, Doug, is your big heart. Because you have a massively big heart. From the way you're always talking about your family, from Kathy and Nick sitting in the back here and your whole family, to almost every conversation, we talked about doing anything, whether it's saving a buck on energy or it's saving a buck on any one of these things I've talked about, it's for the students, right? We're doing construction, if, if we're talking about modifying a special education room, the first thing Doug talks about is the students. And that's awesome. And so we're really gonna miss you, Doug. I'm gonna miss you more than you know. He is really serious, by the way, about retiring because after 16 years, I still don't have his personal telephone number. And I asked him, like literally ten minutes ago, I go, "Can I get that?" And he said, "No." But what he doesn't know is I have Kathy's telephone number. So Kathy, we're gonna get together for dinner, glass of wine, Doug. I won't bug you about work, well, maybe a little bit. But I want to thank you for the last 16 years with me and the last 20, 30 years here at the district because you have truly made an incredible, incredible difference.
Well, Mark, that's interesting. He gave his personal telephone number to the rest of us. So, well, Doug, we'd like to recognize you with our retirement award and wish you the best of luck in your retirement with your family and your travels.
I appreciate the opportunity to say, because you've worked a lot here on all the hours I've invested in this district. I just wanted to say that, you know, from my, from my first institutional public institution job, I, I've always said that it's an honor to have the opportunity to be responsible to lead the maintenance of the facility and development. And the opportunity's been provided here, it's just amazing. I didn't take this job because it was easy. I had a pretty good job before I came here, better than I knew, actually. But this was really interesting. I came from a place where the buildings were all 100 years old, they had plans or specifications, and every problem was in this street. Well, here was an opportunity to actually build one of them. Well, about two-thirds of them. And, but the others were very new and there were some records of what was there. And there was not a maintenance department that would prevent a maintenance span per se, it was really, there was no preventing maintenance span. And, and it was, it was, it was very challenging, but it, but it became a fascinating opportunity to learn about everything, build everything from the ground up and understand it completely. What an honor. I couldn't have imagined when I got out of college and I graduated, got a structural engineering, you know, technical engineering background, they culled it, I got a lot of credit from the dean, but I wanted to go where I wanted to go. Went into petroleum industry, I could have never imagined that to get up in a place like this. It's just awesome. Because when I was in school, I really wanted to build buildings and things like that. So I got a good chance of living here. This district has come a long way. When I came here, I came from a district that was extraordinarily stable. And first December, I was here, they were doing tax anticipation, that's meaning payroll for the rest of the year. It's like, oh my God, what did I do? What did I, did I make the right decision? One of the rules I have learned from one of my mentors is ask for the budget. Well, I didn't get a budget here for about two years. You know, the old CFO, it wasn't Mark, but it was totally awesome, better CFO. I had to wrap it off the ordering tables and the music, an extra copy, to learn what funding there was in and it's a different, different place. But, but we got through it all. It was just amazing to lead the team of design, or think of design and construction of these buildings. But if you, you know, a lot of people may wonder historically when you think back, well, you know, there were lawsuits, things weren't built right, but what, how did that happen? And I always felt bad about it, but the reality is, when I was hired, that thing was going full blast, getting ready to start, that's why they brought me in. And I had to build the credit maintenance program and, and, and we had to reorganize staff levels every year. We assigned everybody a new job description in the department. It was, it was really, really challenging time and I couldn't be everywhere with, with all the construction going on everywhere at once. And unfortunately, we had some bad partners that were selected for some of the architectural and construction team that no longer can work with the district since those jobs, but then, so the construction's done, I got a deep breath back when the recession hit, it was just a real nice resurfaced there. And filled with excitement, probably lawsuit against the people who did all of that effective work. And that was just the, it's like starting another construction project for another four or five years. But, but we got through it, we were made whole with our, and got our buildings, I think, fairly well fixed. There's been nacking problems that were still going back fixing flaws, we're fixing one right now in high school districts. But I think that's the last big one out there, Kevin, so hopefully to build a, catch your breath, our mountain. I'm very proud of the operating costs that we've had here over the last 22 years. You see my annual report, the, the net operating costs besides all the other things like energy costs and capital projects, those which are valuable based on the needs of the district. That operating cost has been less than 1% here, which I think is better than inflation. And we did pretty good there. The, the, the economy will, Kevin, carry that on. Most of the years of the district here have been fantastic leadership. That's a carry on, Mark. The academy, it's, it's, it's really been nice working with you all. And, and there's been some past leaders here that were awesome as well. I want to recognize the dedication of public service of the Board of Education here, especially Tony, Paul, and the custody all around area, the time you guys have invested in, when I thought ideas here were kind of off the ball, told you the great value down the road. And you were willing to dig in and understand it with this, participating in evaluation based on some of these things that has contributed to, to a lot of the successes we had. I don't know if people realize, it's, you know, there's been a lot of presentations made about the energy conservation, how wonderful it is, or, or you're doing, you know, being very sustainable, reducing our energy costs. But the thing that a lot of people probably don't recognize is on the way of doing that, we've made the kind of improvements that will, that'll improve the environment in the facilities for the occupants. We're able to do things like monitor the amount of fresh air coming into facilities and changing. When COVID hit, took a couple hours of programming for the campus exit, both, we met the C B C ashtray requirements for changes, where a lot of our peers couldn't do it at all or had to go take ester money, a lot of ester money, and spend it on renovating their H V C facilities. And here we were, that took years, here we were, a little bit of time being spent, we're always building the fresh air in the buildings, the extra fresh air. It was, it was, and our, our staff, our maintenance staff, they have the facilities, the newer, more effective equipment, were able to be more effective in their jobs. Troubleshooting went down on repairs and they could concentrate, do a better job, and be reactive, and keep the facilities in better shape by doing all those things. I'm not sure people always, we don't really talk about it that much when we present these ideas for making investment, and what's the return on investment of the energy savings dollars? Because that's, it's kind of hard to quantify those other things. I, I, I hope that the, the, the future, the designs we put in, a couple of our bigger expenditures that were just coming out of, were the kind of renovation projects that you'll recognize that are still around on the next life cycle, I don't know if I'll be on this earth yet, but the, the cost for those next replacements, if they're done at the appropriate time, will be about a third of what they were this time. So these investments, we've made not only an investment for now, but a third investment for the future here in this district. And I always thought these buildings are here forever, so we should build things thinking about them in the long term, the long-term best. I'm sorry, I really, I get to the end. The O N M staff, all of them, Kevin, fantastic, very open-minded, they'll listen to all my babbling and ideas and I know you'll make some of them your own. And I just wanted to share with you how I've been doing things and I will give you a way to get to them. Thanks, Sherri, you're gonna need it, you're going to need maybe something possibly inappropriate, I've got enough time to get 99% of it. There's always something new in this apartment, it's always fun, never boring. And, and, but, but the team that's here now, I've worked for 35 years in this job, last 15 years ago, the department we've got now, the people on that team, it's a great group, it's a great group, it really is. Very fortunate to have them all here. And I, I'm comfortable that you're a real good ass with Kevin and Chris. I, I leave the district, I'll start traveling hopefully also. And most importantly, I'm so thankful for my amazing family who are here today, Kathy and Nick, of their patience and, you know, willingness to allow me to invest the time I did doing the things I was able to do here. You're amazing. I just can't, can't thank you guys.
If he is, don't mind, I will, I will try not to be overly repetitive here. Hard not to be. As a board member, I've been here quite a while, all the time, Doug's been here and been on the O N M committee. I, I, you know, I, I work and deal with a lot of people through industry in my business environment. I, I have never come across a person who is competent at their job as you, Doug. I, 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 the amount of knowledge, the technical knowledge and ability to share that knowledge just gave me as a board member the utmost confidence in what we were doing and the decision-making that was being done. And we, you know, there's a lot of dollars that get spent in that area and there's been a lot of dollars saved on behalf of this community by Mr. Kasek's efforts throughout the years. And the time and dedication has gone well above what you would normally pay an individual to do. I, I know you've spent, you know, snow in Europe, whatever time in the morning, checking that out. I mean, I don't know that there's a person other than maybe the superintendent at the time that, that put more time into this district than you. And I just wanted, I mean, honestly, thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the time and diligence and effort you put into this district. You really have made a huge difference in our district and it's, you know, obviously I will not ever forget just all the efforts that you've made on behalf of our community. It's been great. Thank you.
Would you like a photo with the board, Doug?
I was ready, I'm ready. Do you want to do it? Do you want to do it now or? Or do you want to do it later?
Later. Okay, we can do it.
Mr. Troy, you have anything to add? Is it your thing?
I, I also will try not to be too repetitive, but it's really hard not to do that. Doug, for the last 15-plus years, it's been my pleasure and honor to not just work with you, but also to learn from you. It seems, if I look back on, on our time together, every conversation, every dialogue, every meeting, there was always something to learn and take away from it and grow as a board member, being responsible for the building and grounds of, of the school district. Mr. Altmaier had mentioned about the conference presentation, but there's also, it's not just the I Asbo one, but it's also the State School Board Conference presenting in Chicago that added to your credibility and our credibility as a school district as well. You've done a yeoman's job in creating a wonderful environment, atmosphere that is conducive to learning. I'm glad that you found your calling professionally and you found it here in Huntley. I also acknowledge and thank your family, Kathy and Nick, for allowing your husband and dad the time in the world in order to devote and dedicate to the school district day in, day out, night in, night out. Thank you from the bottom of my heart to all of you, Kathy, Nick, and Doug most of all. I'm gonna miss you tremendously and, and I'll try and get that telephone number because every once in a while I might still want to ping you on one finger or another. So thank you again and I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person, but I'm glad we had a chance to talk earlier today offline.
Anything else, Mr. Troy, that, that, that?
Well, no, not, not as far as the recognition, but we do have item 811 regarding amendment number two. So unless there's somebody that wants to chime in, I'd like to move ahead still.
Yeah, I'd like to talk a little bit about that one. The Grounds Management Service Agreement, amendment number one, was approved October 21st, 2021, which extended the agreement for three years. That amendment is set to expire this November, November 15th. A T V has proposed a four-year extension and an annual increase of 3.4%, which will run from March 15th, 2025 through November 15th, 2028. The administration would like to recommend to the board to approve amendment number two at the next regular board meeting.
All right. Any questions from the committee?
No.
All right. Any questions from the board as a whole?
No.
All right. Not hearing any, any objection to moving this forward from the committee side. All right, we'll go ahead and move that ahead then. Item 812, Mr. Lindquist?
Change order number one for the curtain wall window project going out to high school attaches the deductible change order number one to credit the district 158 expenses for the background checks and consulting services in response to minor construction defects. That being said, the administration requests the Board of Education to approve this change order number one in the amount of $2,131 at the next regular board meeting.
You are always in favor of getting credits. Any questions from the committee?
Nope.
Any questions from the board in general?
No.
All right. Not hearing any objections to moving this forward then. All right, we'll go ahead and move that ahead. Moving on to item nine, please.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Troy. Legislation and Policy Committee, I don't have any legislation updates, anything, Mr. Lombard, so we'll move to 9.2. Do you want to get off?
Sure. So with 9.2, with our policy, we have five policies for our first reading. This next month, we do not have a committee in the whole in November, so our second reading will then take place in December. But I wanted to kind of highlight, kind of just do a quick crosswalk between the current policy and the recommended policy. Dr. There, some of these, being our Title IX Coordinator, if there's something I'm forgetting, you can jump right on in, you know the process really, really well with those pieces. So our first policy is colon 260, Uniform Grievance Process and Procedures. What, the major changes between our current and the recommended policy for approval would be that it removes the Title IX complaints from one of the lists for uniform grievance process to be investigated and move that to a fully rewritten policy, which will be the next one, colon 265. So with that taking that piece out, there were some wording changes. We have both a Title IX Coordinator and a non-discrimination Coordinator slash Complaint Manager. And so if something did fall under the implications, where it would be Title IX, taking that Title IX Coordinator and/or Designee and putting that in the new policy rewritten and then removing that language from policy two, colon 260. There's one removal of a sentence and Dr. There and I kind of touched base on this one a little bit further that is being recommended because it's not required by law. So we looked at that. It's the removal of a sentence, if the student is under the 18 years of age, the Complaint Manager will notify his or her parents or guardian that they may attend an investigatory meeting in which their child is not involved. Our recommendation is that we would be okay with that being removed because that is part of the process in the next is part of the process in the next, um, policy two-colon-two-six-five. So, if there were, um, a allegation around Title IX, parents would still be, um, involved before any of the components actually happened. Some of the things that might fall under, um, the regular uniform grievance, um, it might be that a administrator is talking to a student, um, to get some information that is it going to go extremely deep into, um, a variety of different areas, and so they may, uh, be following up with that parent. It is part of our practices, um, and procedures based on what it is that they're going to be, um, talking about. If there was ever anything that would, um, require, um, voice involvement, parents are notified right away and, uh, they will be able to be part of those kinds of things. So, while it looks like, ooh, we're taking away that right from the parent, it is taking it that and moving it into that new policy two-colon-two-six-five. And that, that was, um, part of the reasons for us being okay with that, uh, recommended removal there. So, policy two-colon-two-six-five is the rewritten Title IX grievance, uh, procedures. Um, and, um, the changes that we talked about above with moving the name and adding designee follows, um, in here, and, um, it is, um, being updated, uh, based on the new twenty-twenty-four Title IX guidelines. Um, and again, that's very detailed in what does that process and procedure look like. Some of the, um, changes, um, in here, and here's Dr. There, we can jump in if I've got it wrong. Um, some of this does give a little bit more flexibility to the district in the investigation process. In the current, um, procedures, we have different levels, uh, who is a, well, as Dr. There's a coordinator, he kind of kicks it off, but then he would turn it over to somebody else who would be an investigator, which then would go to somebody else who's the decision-maker, um, and it kind of goes back and forth bouncing, uh, between the two. Um, there, that decision-maker right now would be, um, the superintendent. Um, this, uh, new, under the new guidelines, there's a little bit of flexibility that maybe the investigator, um, is also, can also be the decision-maker. Uh, there's still a component where, um, the ultimate, ultimate, uh, information does come from the superintendent in any of our grievance procedures, but somebody else can make that decision based on the investigation that they are doing. So, give, again, um, a little bit more of, uh, some flexibility in that. The other is that there, uh, in the current, there is no official, um, informal resolution process, and under this new guidance, there can be a time where there could be, um, bringing people together and trying to, uh, informally, um, resolve a situation if parties wanted to, to be able to, to do that. Another difference was, um, it had to be in writing for an investigation to occur. Um, now it would be, um, could be oral or a written complaint, um, based on that. So, if somebody does, um, bring that up in, in just verbal conversation, that would initiate, um, where that, that process would go through. A couple other changes would be, um, under, um, or in, and I know they go into more detail, um, in, uh, seven-colon-two-zero, um, kind of identifying, changing it from sexual harassment to sex-based harassment. Um, and so that would be some wording change there. Under policy five-colon-one-hundred, staff development program, um, this one focuses more around, uh, there was one removal of, um, annual trainings that nurses would do for all employees, uh, that does remove, um, chronic health conditions on an annual basis. Um, and then they're specified as, we've got, um, for asthma, we have for diabetes, very specific things under, um, that piece of that. And then, um, in addition to the language around trauma-informed practices and interventions, also adds that we do need to make sure that we are training on the definition of trauma, what is trauma-informed, trauma, uh, responsive learning environment, and, um, looking at that as a whole child. Um, and so, um, again, that was in there. And then, uh, the training around, uh, title line grievance, again, it's not being removed, uh, fully from being removed from here, and it is part of that, uh, policy two-colon-two-six-five. Policy seven-twenty, harassment of students prohibited. Um, footnote, um, addition of sex-based harassment, not just sexual harassment, and states that harassment is so severe or pervasive that it limits or denies a person's ability to participate in or benefit from the district's educational program or activity. And then the adding, not only is it complaint manager or the complaint manager or designee, uh, so again, then Dr. There would be able to assign someone else who has been trained, and there's a number of individuals in the circle who have been trained in that component. And policy seven-colon-one-eight-five, teen violence, uh, again, in reference to policy, uh, two-colon-two-six-five, title line changes prohibited. It used to say any person, um, now it says any person, um, district employee, agent, or student, so it's spanning what does any person mean, uh, from engaging in sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment. And then, um, down there, uh, that is also added in policy seven-colon-twenty, um, at that language of any person, including a district employee, agent, or student. So, so those of you who would go through and kind of look at, some of those are footnote dates, uh, if there was changing with a plural from a singular, I didn't, I like those and some of the date changes that were in there. Um, I think I hit, uh, all of the crosswalk components there. And at this time, um, administration is recommending adopting and implementing the press, uh, recommendations, um, as followed as they are updated to the twenty-twenty-four Title IX regulations, as well as follows all of the protected group class of individuals per, um, the Illinois law and that, uh, specifically the Illinois Human Rights Act. Um, and so while there may be changes from time to time or potential changes in terms of Title IX regulation, we still need to keep in mind that we have to follow the Illinois, uh, law that's set out, um, from discriminating against students on basis of sexual orientation and gender identity, which were two additions, um, in policy seven-colon-two-zero. Any questions?
There's a lot of impact in this, Troy. This is, there's, there's a lot of changes here that aren't necessarily seen highlighted. You pull up and you compare the changes to Title IX from what was last year to what it is now, it is a completely changed document. Uh, they have completely rewritten, and I'm, I guess I'm frustrated with our federal government that they would go through this without actually, you know, having the force of a law change to do this, and they just rewrote it. It's frustrating because they have changed completely the scope of Title IX, um, for, for what it was for fifty years to what it is now. It's frustrating. At the district, though, we have to follow federal law. So, I, I understand that now. It needs to be understood as well that this is being challenged in many different courts and has successfully actually gone up to the Supreme Court to be monitored and kicked back. So, even the Kansas case, they have allowed third-party groups to join in the case against the federal government for these changes. Um, and because some members of those groups are actually connected to our schools, three of our schools actually do not need to follow the changes in Title IX. So, we have a much, we have a complex situation here, right? Because three of our schools, and, and the schools are Huntley High School, Heinemann, and Conley. Um, and you can go out to the Kansas case and you can see it, it's, it's all out there. Do not have to follow this. The other schools do, so this is complex from a board and administration to understand how to deal with that. And everybody should know that as we, we go through this. Um, because these changes, they're all over the place. But the one thing they did not change in the Title IX that I saw was athletics, and that is something that is very much, uh, talked about. However, a lawyer might look at the scope of the document, how it changed and then affect athletics, but, uh, it's something that is interesting, uh, in actual Title IX law language, and much of what we follow is actually Illinois law. My questions, uh, around this, um, so the first, I fully support the changes to pregnancy in Title IX. It should have been that fifty years ago, it should have had perfection for students in schools who were pregnant, and it's a long time coming for that to happen there. So, I one-hundred percent, uh, behind that. Around the grievance side of things, there's two different levels of evidence we can use, um, when we go through the grievance. If we pick one, are we using the preponderance of evidence or, um, look at us a little bit yesterday about? Or the clear and convincing standard of evidence? We did not pick one. So, my understanding is that the preponderance of evidence is one of the lowest standards of evidence, um, to go forward with this. So, I think we should, we should make a decision. If you use, from what I read in Title IX, and I'm not a lawyer, but from what I read in the changes, you have to use the clear and convincing. All of your grievances have to be following that. But again, that's a, that's a higher level of standard for evidence, um, and given that there's one person who can make the decision, I would rather have a higher level of evidence for me as a board member. Um, the second thing is, I think we should really look at, I know that there's the freedom for the person who is the Title IX coordinator to make the decision. From a due process perspective and just making sure everything's checked, not meaning anything with Dr. There, um, anybody can be in that position, I think we should almost enforce a double check just to make sure there's two people who agree with it. I think that's something that I think behooves us, because if you get someone in there who's biased, they might push a lot more here.
So, talking about with our practices in that procedural components, and we have that flexibility, uh, to do so, I believe, I mean, currently, and I know these are recommended changes for every one of, I think we have a lot, but any, um, grievance, uh, processes that come through, um, with those, uh, Dr. There and I work on all of those, he provides that information, and then, again, that written file would come from, at this time, it's the superintendent. So, um, I don't know that we would be making those, you know, kind of changes that does get that flexibility, but we can absolutely go back and look at, um, the procedures and whatnot, um, and then looking at that, what we identify which of the two would be going forward.
Yeah, and there's, as this is totally rewritten, there's going to be a whole new set of unintended consequences that come with it that may be what people think for and maybe not. I mean, you could look at how they teach in a classroom, could be considered some sort of sexual harassment, if they put some sexual component into it, lots of different things. People could take this legally any way, uh, because it's now unsubtle. Um, the, the other area, and this is more of a question of our practice, on these Title IX cases, are they more in the end of accommodating someone who is missing something, or do we have a punitive component as well when we do these investigations?
Yeah, there, yeah, there can be a punitive outcome to it without a doubt. So, it's, um, primarily providing support, um, on those first steps, but there is a punitive outcome. Um, the issue would be a initial Title IX process, um, the link and the draw-out steps that you have to take. A lot of times, our building acts so quickly, do interviews and what have you, um, a lot of it gets called, you know, that day. Um, if we do go down that Title IX route, um, it, it strengthens it out a little bit. So, um, we do see some punitive stuff, I'm running our practices, and this year myself and Ms. Fosman, um, we get together, contact those parents, talk them through the Title IX, um, procedures and processes and the, some of the paperwork, um, and, you know, what we've experienced so far this year, um, they look at that process and it's not something they want to track down, and more times than not, they're happy with, um, this is the one that's been carried out, um, thus far.
And I guess that's where, um, I emphasize the appeal side of things, to ensure that we're specific in our grievance process that there are appeals, um, that are outlined to both the complainant and the receiving person if they don't get to what they want. Um, because I think that would follow due process. Does look like Title IX, they might have to actually hold some of that back and there's not as many appeals if you are on the punitive side, at least. Again, I'm not a lawyer, that's, that was my read on it, and I don't, I don't think we should do that. So, um, I think these are things we can do. We kind of have to follow federal law, we're in this weird thing where if this is gonna go to the Supreme Court and, uh, they will weigh in on ultimately, I think, how this gets, uh, handled. So, I don't, I don't know that we're, we're done yet, but I think the district needs to handle it really understanding what's just out there right now. So, sorry, that's a long winded there, but there's, there's a lot here in this change. Um, so, pardon, I hear the other, uh, member, if Ms. Murray's not here, any other comments? Sorry, I'm going to throw in just. No, I, I don't have any other. I know you spent a lot of time on this more than I have, so. There's, there's a lot, yeah, there's a lot. There's a lot here. Any, uh, comments from the, the board? Any, anybody on the phone there?
Nothing to add.
All right, so, um, we've had, spent a bit of time talking about this, the board, so, um, I'll leave it at that.
And then we'll bring that forward, um, then share to the October, um, COW, um, and we can look at some of those components that are more, uh, not the October, the December COW, and we can go ahead and, uh, maybe even share some of, uh, our, um, steps in that appeal process, um, as well as just administrative procedures, because I think that can definitely outline, um, and have an understanding for everybody, what does that look like on a day-to-day basis, um, in one of these situations, both for policy two-sixty and policy two-six-five, um, because they do follow a lot of the various same procedures or features, anything that can help, um, people feel comfortable about the process that we do have here in the district.
Thank you.
All right. Moving to, uh, Ms. Murray's not here, Ms. Wiley, do you have anything for that or, uh?
Um, I will pass over to Mrs. Barr, um, to give us a talk. I'm very proud of the work that she's done, I'm not going to take her wind away, um, of updating our website, getting it rolled out. Um, it's a good reflection of our district, and I think it's a very good reflection of the flavor our district is taking right now, which is really providing information to our families and our students and our community. Um, the approach, I think you, you did was excellent, so thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Mrs. Wiley. Yeah, I was just going to say, I, uh, we did launch, uh, the new website last Friday, um, and for the most part, it went smoothly. We lost a couple links along the way, but, um, that's to be expected, and, um, I do, I do want to encourage, um, new ideas, ways that we can, you know, like with anything, continually improve, so, um, uh, I tried to put that out there in various places, but, um, welcome, welcome feedback to communications@district158.org. Um, but yeah, we hope this is going to provide a more robust platform. We've been able to apply some, um, automation to it to try to keep things more up to date, to make it easier to use, it's more fully supported than the one that we had before, so the longevity of it is, is, um, good and all it's pretty much the same cost. So, um, yeah, we're excited about that. Um, and then a couple of other updates for the board, um, had to do with, um, some events that are coming up, and I just wanted to mention here real quick that we've got a Brad event on Tuesday night, which is celebrating individuals with disabilities, and that will be Tuesday, October eighth, over at Heinemann. Um, and then we've actually got two events that night, um, but along, uh, in the same vein. So, after that, there will be a virtual presentation on meaningful inclusion. Um, this is actually a unique opportunity, it's a paid training for all District One-Fifty-Eight staff, um, but it's also open to parents and the community to join virtually via Zoom. So, that information's on our website, it's also on our calendar, it's also going to be in school newsletters, um, so we're trying to hit it hard to get it out there, but we think it's important and, and we're looking forward to doing the learning together as a school community. Uh, any questions for me?
Um, any, any feedback? I know you had launched, um, that you worked really hard with Ms. Castens, uh, which is our athletic director of high school. To kind of build a little bit, it's kind of our first start at building some alumni network, um, so how did that event go at homecoming at the football game?
Yeah, um, actually, and I wanted to touch on to just briefly the Silver Path program because that's fun, really, really, we've had great response on that. In fact, today we just ran out of cards, so we'll be getting some more, um, which means we handed out about, uh, close to two-hundred now to date. Now, the alumni piece was certainly fun, and I was there that night, but I don't have great metrics on that because I didn't collect the R S V Ps, but, um, is Dr. Beal, hi. Do you have anything? Dr. Beal, you could share on that. I took a bunch of pictures and everybody seemed to enjoy it, um, but I.
We had, first off, good evening, um, we had about a hundred and thirty-three alumni that actually signed up on the forum. Um, we did provide, uh, those a hundred and thirty-three, uh, with T-shirts that say HHS alumni. Um, they also got a wristband which allowed them access to, uh, to the field, uh, on the south end zone where those leechers were packed, uh, for the, pretty much the majority of the games. Uh, we also provided snacks and, uh, a lot of it, a lot of it for them just coming back and knowing that we were at least starting somewhere. Um, with that, uh, those hundred and thirty, um, hundred and thirty-plus, uh, R S V Ps, uh, we did collect email addresses, uh, to begin building somewhat of a database. Um, I know October eleventh, uh, during our, uh, last home game, uh, we do have the class of two thousand and four, uh, that's kind of been planning some stuff that we've been connecting with, uh, a few of their members since March. since March, that are looking to bring a large contingency just back to the area that weekend. It was just one that was convenient for them on that weekend. So they did a lot of planning themselves, but we definitely saw the need for us to really start building that alumni base, one, to really help we're back into our students here within the district with all of the jobs and the various opportunities that they have, they're just looking to just try to get connected.
And I think that's one of the definite things, that there are so many different things for classes when they're doing their reunion. It's if we can get touch base with a couple individuals from the various classes and be able to have that. So this year, I think it was a great start, and we can definitely move forward in collecting those things, that if we had a set weekend or whatnot for games, that people know that and start planning ahead, so that if, oh, I'm coming in two weeks, especially if I'm traveling, I can't get to both, you know, kinds of things. And so definitely a step in the right direction, and I applaud the high school for kind of taking the initiative and the lead on that, to be able to really build this, it's going to take a committee, right? You can't rely on the athletic department, the student council, they started that, and will continue to grow from there, and would love to see a full committee to be able to do those things, so that it lasts throughout the school year and every school year, so that we can get those connections, whether it's through incubator, or coming in and rating, or whatever it might be, connecting our alumni back to what's going on here today.
No, I think, I think it was an excellent first start. Another thing that I really appreciated was the partnership between the school and our chamber. I saw a lot of things on social media, talking about people that are business owners, or people that are part of our community that own businesses, that are alumni. A lot of them are people that I never knew, and I've been here for 20 years myself, so I thought that was a great partnership, another way of just kind of increasing our exposure to the community and realizing that you can build a, build a business here, you can come back to Huntley. So I applaud you for the work that's been done, and thank you to the high school too for hosting that.
Anything else?
Did you want to update numbers for the Silver Path?
Oh, I thought I did, I didn't do that. Well, I ran out of Silver Paths, but what that means, so I had ordered 200. So we're at about 200, and then, you know, I think we'll continue to promote the program, and everybody has been really positive about it, so it's great.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move that forward, and Mr. Pitten.
All right, thank you. We'll move to number 11, Board of Education, 11.1 Strategic Planning.
All right, well, I'm going to start this with an activity that, even if you're out in the audience or listening from home, but also the board, I want you just to not talk to your neighbor, but I want you to, it's kind of an activity that Dr. Zer, Ms. Bar, and I already embarked on, but I want you to think about my, and Dr. McCrystal, I'm looking at you as, I'm like, yep, we did this one. So I want you to think, it's October of 2030, you're having your morning coffee, breakfast, whatever it is, and you open the New York Times, or you pull it up on your computer, and there is the statement, Huntley Community School District 158. What does that headline say, or what would you want that headline to say in the year 2030? Just think about that for a minute, you can jot down a couple thoughts. Amy Adams, Denise already did this, so. I don't know, I don't know.
What do you have, Scott?
Just being built new schools.
Re-110, early 2000.
Yeah. Really wish that I had.
No, talk to your neighbors. Okay, we did need a little bit longer time, and when we get into the strategic planning, we will have people do longer, and I will not ask you to identify your thoughts, but we will be doing that as part of the strategic plan. But we did this activity, when it was kind of presented to us, it's starting with something like that, where individually, you're thinking, what is it that we want this district to be in the future, right? Start with that end in mind, and to be able to come through, and of course, right, pick up some funny things, but then you get asked that, and it's like, what is this that we want for our students, our staff, our families, and our community? And so, in looking at that, at your desk areas here, and then we'll go ahead and link it into the agenda, is kind of our thought on reimagining the strategic plan. As we know, our KPIs are going to be finishing here with the school year. Obviously, we're not going to stop planning and doing the things, Mr. Altmeier talked about, one of the goals that didn't make it as a KPI. Well, it didn't make it as a KPI because it's now part of our practices, right? But it's things that just become a part of what we do all the time, to be continually thinking about success. And so, one of the things that we'll be identifying with our partners as we go through the strategic plan is, we're going to still want to have measures of success or data dashboard that's up there, that talks about things like retention, it's going to talk about number of employees that we have, it might be our demographics in a breakdown, it's going to have academics and attendance, and all of those things that we feel are continuous improvement pieces. And so that piece won't go away, and we're going to want to define those with the stakeholders. So our stakeholders will be from a variety of people, students, staff, parents, community members, administrators, board members, business leaders, and the format for the process will be varied as well. It might have some in-person meetings, there may be some surveys to gather information. Presentations, right, you can't start developing and thinking years ahead if you're stepping in and don't know, what does the finances look like, what is our academic achievement? You've got to start somewhere with a piece of that. So some of those may be presentations that we are doing in community forums or on campuses. So again, those community forums, town halls, call it what you might, a dedicated webpage where we will have people to come through that, as if they're not able to be part of the process physically, they can go and they can get that information on a regular basis. So our primary objective is going to be that we want to launch a process for strategic planning that separates strategic action from continuous improvement, but both are extremely important and need to go hand in hand. And our rationale of why we are reimagining the strategic plan is that today and tomorrow's learners look differently than in the past, forcing us to think differently in how we might create the learning environment and the working environment for the people we have within our district. So we had come up with some things that we felt as a steering group here would measure our success in the planning process. We want to make sure that we have input from all stakeholders. We want to make sure that they have the opportunity to do so, that our actions are clearly aligned with desired outcomes, that our whole community understands what we're doing and the why of what we're doing. And that Huntley looks meaningfully different than today if our objectives are achieved, right? We're thinking future, planning for that, and how do we get there based on our measures and our objectives? And then how will we achieve those? Well, we want to define success in long-term KPIs for the district dashboard, engage stakeholders in crafting potential futures. And we've talked about, we want the portrait of a graduate, the portrait of a learning environment, and also, when we're talking about the staff component, the portrait of a working environment. Looking at using futures to identify the changes that best support our KPIs, identify what will start, what will stop, and what will continue. And oftentimes, when you're going through things, you want to immediately jump to the action of what we're going to do. And one of the things that, right after we were partnering with EAD, and after we went through that headline exercise, it was then quietly on your own, think about, what are five things we need to immediately stop doing, not start doing? What are those things that we need to immediately stop doing that may prevent us from getting to that future? And again, just because we've always done it some way can sometimes be thrown up there, and that helps the process oftentimes. So we want to identify the stop, the start, and the continue, and then again, design, engage community members in designing and pressure testing the plan for success. So kind of a brief timeline, and again, we're going to tweak this, and Ms. Bar's going to get our logo on there once we have any feedback, and we'll finalize this. Here, at the end of the month, we want to share and invite, share the process, invite people to be participatory in this. Again, there are going to be some things that might be tapped on the shoulder and invite for parts of those pieces, other things that we want, a variety of individuals from, again, all those stakeholder groups. In November, December, start with those futures in mind, identifying what those three portraits are, and then defining our success through that district dashboard measure, so those continuous improvement components that we want just to be across every year. Then jumping in, in January through March, having some data presentations as we're getting ready to get feedback on the continuous success, but then that long-term, how are we going to reach those futures? Again, we have to have those data pieces. And then desired outcomes, long-range plan goals, future focus, setting a focus and a set of considerations that will inform our decision-making and action. And then by June, something that we're going to be able to share what that final plan looks like and those final destinations. And I laugh at what's that future, I don't think we're ever going to be there, right? And sometimes it's okay not to be able to finish something in a year's time span, as long as we're moving towards that. And when you think about strategic planning and shaping what the environment looks like for today's learners, oftentimes you can't do that in one year, and it might need to spill over into a few. And then we'll still always have in July through August, setting what are those KPIs for the next school year, that again, will fit through some of those plans, and again, some of that might be a two-year process or whatnot, and then sharing those KPIs out with the community through our regular board meetings and things like that. So that's kind of, that in a nutshell, there'll be a lot more information as we go through. We're pretty excited about the process, we've looked at a lot of different things, and we believe that we can do this internally. And so embarking on this and making sure that we are getting that feedback and able to do those, and having some of our students help read parts of these sessions, getting them ready for some of those competencies that we hope to see in our portraits of a graduate, and embarking in there. So any thoughts, any questions, anything that you're like, ooh, we're missing that, and either it's just not written in here, or that we should be thinking about if we move forward.
Until then, it was my headline.
You got it right.
It's got to come.
That was a good exercise. And it could have been any newspaper, so.
Yeah, question?
Yes.
So did I hear you correctly, we're self-administering this and not doing a third-party, or using a third-party for this?
Correct, we felt we could do this. I know one of Mrs. Bar's credentials is all-around strategic planning and the process with those kinds of things, and based on some of the work that we've done through PAST, as well as being able to have that relationship and connection with our community and stakeholder groups, we do feel that we can do this internally.
Okay. And then the second thing is, I actually have something to pin on that headline dartboard, and it's something around the events that happened over the last couple of weeks, and that would be that in 2030, I'd love to see a headline that says, Huntley 158 School awarded second Blue Ribbon School.
Right after that came out, I went right to Dr. McCrystal and said, we are doing this. So we are on the same page there.
Yeah, I did some research and found that since the award's inception, I think it was in the mid-'80s, only three McHenry schools, or three schools in McHenry County have been awarded a Blue Ribbon designation, and I saw that, and I said, I know that there's criteria and thresholds for meeting that particular kind of achievement, but I think that that is a national norming that we can strive for as a school district, and I think it's attainable, but I don't have our school district's data to know where we measure up on those thresholds. But I think it's something to strive for, and I would challenge the district to have that long-term vision, to do exactly that, is to have that attainment.
Absolutely, we accept that challenge, and we appreciate that, because we do feel that there are great things that are happening in this district, and I, you know, do read some of those, we are right up there with that, and it's something to, again, strive for, and to be able to, it could be just like the icing on the cake, and I know you don't always need recognition for something, but that would be internationally recognized, and I think the hard work that happens, especially in our buildings, that would be fantastic. So thank you for bringing that up. We've actually talked about it, pulled up that criteria and all of those things, so it is on the radar. And then let me go back, and while I say that we are not embarking on a third-party, if you will, to bring forward, to consult on a paid component, we have, and we would continue through this process, to partner with EAD, it's not just part of our partnership, they actually came out, and we, as they were listening to how we would like to kind of shift the thought process, again, it was based on some of the work that they have done more regularly, I don't believe they've embarked on it with a K-12, R-K through 22 school district that's been more at that university level. And so it was, it was a great think tank, and we would continue to do that. So we would have a thought partner as we go through, but not somebody coming out, leading those, gathering all that information, we do feel that we can do that internally.
Great, thanks for indulging me.
Any other comments? All right, this looks good. I'm looking forward to the process. With that, we will move to 11.2, the minute, so any comments on the September 19 minute? All right, we'll move that forward, and I'll look over any public comments.
No.
All right, with that, I'll make a motion to move into closed session at 7:37 PM.
Second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Parriano, can I have a little?
Mr. Crady?
Yes.
Mr. Bevan?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Parriano?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiley?
Yes.
Dr. McCrystal, I'm concerned with the name of the podcast.
Are we going to do a poll?
All right, we will resume in public session on January 3rd, 8:09 PM. So action from closed session. May I have a moment?
Mr. Riven.
Here.
Mr. Poggiaro.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mrs. Wiley.
Here.
All right, with that, there's four of us in the forum. I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:09 PM. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Are all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we can have it.